Thursday, October the 22nd. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Board of Multnomah County Commissioners. The health and safety of our community and staff members are at the forefront of our minds as we continue to navigate county business in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. In accordance with the declaration of emergency announced on March 11th, and extended by the Board of County Commissioners on September 24th, today's meeting is being held virtually. To align with social distancing guidelines, some rules associated with Board of County Commissioner meetings will be temporarily altered. Please remember to mute your mic when you are not speaking, and when you're presenting, make sure to unmute your mic and check to see that your camera is on. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Myron moves. Commissioner Vega Peterson seconds. Approval of the consent calendar. The board clerk will now take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaya Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Kefory?
Aye. The consent calendar is approved.
We received for public testimony, we received one written public testimony which has been shared with the board and staff. Should I go on? R1. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a full faith and credit financing agreement, refunding full faith and credit series 2021 bonds, solid bridge budget.
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Vega Peterson moves. Mr. Jaya Paul seconds. Approval. Oh, yes, of R1.
Morning, Chair Kefory, Commissioners. Hopefully you can hear me and see me. I'm here to request authorization for the issuance and sell a full faith and credit financing agreement, which is essentially a request to refinance our sellwood bridge bond funds that were issued in fiscal year 2012. Our budget and financial policies state that my office essentially looks at opportunities for refinance when market conditions are favorable to the county. And we usually don't look at refinancing opportunities unless it presents a net present value savings of above 3%. And this particular issue in the current market conditions, if we actually refinance, we can potentially get some substantial savings with that process. And so we're estimating at this point in time that if we refund these bonds, we can get about net present value savings about 9%, which is about $8 to $9 million over the term of the bonds. And there's about 13 years remaining on the term of these bonds. And that equates to about $700,000 in annual debt service savings. It can obviously fluctuate slightly from that, but that's about an average savings from year to year for the term of these bonds. And so, yeah, obviously, there's a lot of negative things going on with our economy. But, you know, the one sliver of good is that interest rates have dropped, and they've stayed substantially low at this point. And for the county, it's my debt issuance process or even a refunding process, it's definitely a favorable market right now. These sellwood bridge bonds, like I said, were issued in 2012 for $128 million. Our outstanding principal balances just under $96 million, and our annual debt service is about $9.5 million. So this request before you today just essentially authorizes me to refund these bonds and start the process. The process does take many weeks to actually execute. So currently with our planned schedule, if you authorize this today, is we actually plan to close out the refunding in the month of January. Actually, January 21st would be our desired closing date for this refunding. I do want to note that these sellwood bonds, they're backed by the vehicle registration fees. So it would provide savings to the bridge fund for the source of revenue. It's not going to provide relief to the general fund. But having said that, it's still obviously very beneficial to move forward with this refunding and save the county a substantial amount of money. So Tom Hansel is also on the call this morning, and he can provide some details around what that savings might be used for if you authorize this refunding request today. So I'll pass it over to Tom.
Thanks, Eric. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chair Kefory, for the record, Tom Hansel, Department of Community Services. Yes, thank you, Eric, and your staff for identifying this potential savings to the transportation funds. As the board is well aware, both roads and bridges operate under capital improvement plans. Willamette Bridge Capital Improvement Plan was adopted in 2015. It outlined significant needs for the county bridges. These funds would be directed to support those projects identified as priority. You're well aware of the Burnside Bridge and the efforts we're doing currently with the Morrison Bridge. So these funds will go to support local match for federal and state dollars to continue our work in providing reliable transportation across the Willamette River. So I really haven't got much more to say. This board is well informed on the efforts the bridge is doing, and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Tom. I will go through the Commissioners by district to see who has questions or comments, and we will start with Commissioner Myron.
Pushed the wrong button. So thank you so much, Eric and your team. And also, Tom, this is really exciting news. And I'm just so pleased to hear, you know, those silver linings and glimmers of light always make a difference during these challenging times. So thank you. No questions.
Commissioner Jaya Paul?
Yes, thank you, Eric, for identifying this opportunity. It really is good news and no questions.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Eric and Tom, for this information. It is good news, and I will say, I really appreciate the way that the team has really looked at how we can use what's happening with the Sellwood Bridge financing to pay it forward to the other bridges, and specifically the Burnside Bridge. I think that helps as we're trying to put together these really big projects. And I'm glad we were able to take advantage of, like you said, the one silver lining in the economy rate. So thank you.
Commissioner Stegman?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Eric. One question. So does this financing kind of work like a mortgage? So we were at a certain percent of interest, and now interest rates have come down, and so we're able to refinance. And if so, then what is the new interest rate?
So when we issued the Sellwood Bridge Bonds, the interest rates were, I think, a little bit under 2.5%. And so this refunding opportunity were more in the lower to 1.5% to 1% range. And let me say this, when we model these potential refundings, we cushion them because obviously the market fluctuates. So in these estimates that I'm giving you, it does have a little bit of a cushion. But, you know, we're going to get way more than a percentage savings on this refunding.
That's great, Eric. So when you talk about a cushion, then is this kind of like, so the rate can't change? And is there like a ceiling and/or a floor?
Yeah, so I think, like I said earlier, I think if, right now, the net present value savings is estimated about 9%. And that does include when we model these, a little bit of a cushion from what the rates were at that point in time. So if that substantially goes down and it gets to that 3% range or below, then obviously, we probably wouldn't move forward with it. But anything above 3% still makes financial sense for the county, regardless of what it costs us to actually issue the refunding, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and that does make sense. But I was asking about, like, you're saying that we were at 2.5%. We're now going to like 1.5% or 1%. Is that rate, is that a variable rate? Does that change? Or is there a floor ceiling?
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood you.
That's okay, no worries.
When we do the refunding, it's fixed. So whatever rate, whatever, when we do the refunding, whatever rate we essentially get, that's essentially fixed in. It's not, it's not fair. Yeah.
Awesome. That great news.
Yeah. And the other thing I just wanted to note that I mentioned earlier is that when we refund these, the term doesn't necessarily go back to the original, like, 20-year term. Like, it just, we refund for the outstanding term that we have. So it'll still, yeah.
Well, great work. Really appreciate you always looking at our pocketbook, especially in these times. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Eagle Eye Eric, finding us the best rates. I love it. Thank you. And just on a personal note, I had the amazing opportunity this weekend, last weekend, to go on a boat ride, and we rode under the Sellwood Bridge. You don't often get to see that view of it. And just filled with pride, it's so beautiful. It looks so gorgeous from the water. And so I'm very happy to cast this boat today and save us some money. Thank you. Marina, would you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaya Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stegman?
Aye.
Chair Kefory?
Aye. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
R2, recognition of Public Health Director Rachel Banks's service to Multnomah County.
So moved.
Second. This is not a voting item, so we do not need, we're just going to celebrate. I mean, we could take a vote, and I'm pretty sure that it would be unanimous. Although, who knows, somebody might vote no, so she stays with us. I'll start things off this morning. It is really a bittersweet day here at Multnomah County, saying goodbye to a beloved colleague. Rachel Banks is leaving the county to serve as the Director of the Oregon Public Health Division. And I can honestly say, I'm not sure that we would have parted with her for anything less than this fantastic opportunity. Rachel has been the cornerstone of so much of public health work since she first joined the county in 2002. When she took the helm of public health in 2017 as Director, I'm pretty sure she had no idea that she was going to be tasked with overseeing our community response to the greatest public health crisis of our time, COVID. But here are some images of Rachel that I will remember. Her office light was always on. Long after most employees began teleworking, you could count on Rachel to come in nights, unfortunately, weekends, all the time. I have vivid memories of her walking laps on the sixth floor of the McCoy Building. Sometimes we would pass each other while she was taking phone calls, trying to get her steps in and stay healthy while she was doing her work. I was always impressed, even in the height of crisis, of uncertainty, of, you know, working 14-hour days, seven days a week. She came into meetings and she was calm, almost serene. And then she would just tackle the most complex and heated challenges of how to prevent the spread of COVID and to keep vulnerable people safe. Community is always first with Rachel, and she puts her values, her values are central to what guides her. And I know that the relationships that she has built with all of us are deep, true, and lasting. Jessica Guernsey is ready to take over this work, but no one can ever fill the shoes of Rachel Banks at Multnomah County. Or should I say, her ballet slippers, because she is a great ballet dancer, I understand, though I have not seen it myself. And with that, I will turn it over to our Health Department Director, Dr. Patricia Charles Heathers, to say a few words.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Kefory. Good morning, Commissioners. Patricia Charles Heathers, your Health Department Director. I am thrilled for the opportunity that Rachel has been given to lead the state's public health efforts. Rachel is a very spiritual person, grounded in her belief of listening to that voice and letting it lead her in her decision-making. I believe she listened to that voice in making this very difficult decision and accepting the State Director of Public Health position. Rachel has worked diligently to address health inequities in Multnomah County by investing in programs and organizations that have left our most impacted populations. My first introduction to Rachel and her team was in January or February of 2019, when she and her team presented on the leading causes of death at a board meeting. I was totally blown away by the attention to details, knowledge, and professionalism that was in full display. I felt so proud that I would have the opportunity to join and partner with this caliber of staff. Rachel's leadership was clearly seen. I would later learn many things from Rachel. Why the Community Health Improvement Plan went in the direction that it did. Our many discussions about tobacco, especially a focus on e-cigarettes, the need for a flavor band, and the usage of menthol cigarettes among African-Americans. Supporting her with her work with the Board of Health Priorities and her focus on decreasing health injustices and increasing longer, healthier lives for the people of Multnomah County. Seems like light years away, because in February of this year, COVID became her focus. We all know how well she led and focused us all on the health inequities we were aware of, but that were even more pronounced during COVID-19. Hence, our focus on the BIPOC community and leading with race. Now, the entire state of Oregon will have the opportunity to benefit from Rachel's passion and leadership. I love the quote that says, "Leadership is not a position or title. It is action and example." Thank you, Rachel, for your actions and the examples that you have set for us all.
Tamika, you are next.
Good morning, Chair.
Good morning.
Kefory and County Commissioners. My name is Tamika Brazil, and I work as the Director of our Chronic Disease Prevention and Health Promotion Unit. And just really would first like to acknowledge that it is with extreme honor that I'm able to speak and celebrate this wonderful woman, Ms. Rachel Banks, today. It's taken me a moment for all of this to sink in, and I went through a range of emotions and feelings that included denial, sadness, ambiguity. But I've arrived at excitement. Excitement about what her leadership will bring to local public health systems across the state of Oregon. I first met Ms. Rachel Smith before Banks, back in '05 or '06, when she joined the Healthy Birth Initiative program as a health educator. I even remember the topic for her first health education class at HBI, and it was breastfeeding. She rocked it, of course. She not only rocked it, she did an amazing job with the perfect mix of education, interaction, participant engagement, and just the sharing of her personal stories and experiences. At that time, that was really the birth of my admiration for her. And as years passed, there were a number of things that snowballed that admiration. We've shared a lot of good laughs, some cries, but more laughs than anything, and a lot of great memories from her wedding. And for some reason, I always think about this one year, we were trying to look for this baby alive, that little Miss Niana, her daughter wanted. So I always think about, you know, just a lot of just great memories, both personally and professionally. I've learned so much from you, Ms. Rachel Banks. And I, you know, I thank you. I thank you for everything. Teaching me, challenging me, giving me a chance, and believing in me, even when I doubted myself. I thank you for allowing me to walk side by side with you and not behind you. I thank you for being my sister first, colleague, and friend. I thank you for being who you are, a woman of great substance, with class and values, integrity being the highest on the list, always staying true to self, keeping your word, and the list goes on, all while remembering to laugh and have fun. Poised with a gift, you've always been able to deliver a message to any audience, from the boardroom to the community. Just look at what you've done, growing a chief way back, starting in 2009, where there were just a handful of people in the room and no funding, and turned into reach and a community movement with grants that brought in millions of dollars over the last decade to the division and through our communities. There is one thing that you didn't teach me, those dance moves. You've always had more soul than me, and I still can't catch a beat, so I'll just stick to my same old two-step. I know that you never thought you'd hear me say this, but those Jefferson demos are proud of you. Your community and the NEP, which is Northeast Portland, for those unfamiliar, is proud of you. The little black girls in the hood are rooting for you, and you give them hope. You give them hope to pursue their dreams. All of our colleagues, you know, on behalf of the Public Health Division and across the county, we're proud of you. I'm so very proud of you. Our ancestors are proud of you. And I'll end with just a little excerpt from Maya Angelou's Phenomenal Woman. And it goes like this. "Now you understand just why my head's not bowed. I don't shout or jump about or have to talk real loud. When you see me passing, it ought to make you proud. I say, 'It's the click of my heels, the bed of my hair, the palm of my hand, the need of my care, 'cause I'm a woman phenomenally. Phenomenal woman, that's you.'" And just as a reminder, when things get tough, and we all have bad days from time to time, remember to keep your head up high so your crown doesn't fall off. Stand tall, queen. I love you and so happy for you. Congratulations, Ms. Rachel.
Oh, Tamika, you got me crying. That was so lovely. All right, Xenia, you're up next.
Woo. That's Tamika. I know. Okay, good morning, Chair. County Commissioners, for the record, my name is Xenia Jong-Kier, and I'm the Director at the Oregon Health Equity Alliance. I'm going to try and share some thoughts from myself and a colleague of mine, so I'll try to be succinct so that you know who is speaking. And so I'll start first. I can't remember my first meeting with Ms. Rachel, but I remember the feelings I had. Initially, it was nervousness about meeting somebody that community members, colleagues, and mentors had told me so much about and whose work I was familiar with and respected so highly. As the Director of HBI, I would see Rachel behind the front desk, supporting individual community members, offering compassionate guidance to her staff and team, and being open to talking to partners, welcoming me into her space, making me feel like she was fully present, engaged, and interested in what I was saying. I would see Ms. Rachel at community events, years after year after year, where she would stop by a table I was at, she would say hi, she would offer a hug, ask how my family was. Years later, these are the same feelings I have when I leave a meeting with Ms. Rachel. I feel seen, I feel heard, and I feel valued. My colleague Katie Swiki writes, "My first interaction with Rachel Banks was working on a state of Black Oregon, shortly after seeing her speak about maternal and child health at a PCC event. The Director of Advocacy and Civic Engagement at the Urban League at the time, Midge Purcell, leaned over to Katie and said, 'Now there is a community advocate.'" This marked Katie's long path of learning from this incredible leader, and it perfectly describes the foundation for all of the interactions since then. Katie says in her most recent years of working with Ms. Rachel have revealed what a brilliant strategic thinker she is, and that she taught us so much about patience, persistence, and justice's long game. For me, over the years, it's been incredible to continue to work with Ms. Rachel. It happened when I came to OJAY, we were deep in this really challenging and powerful project, Community Power Change, or the Multnomah County Chip. During this project, which was one of dozens, I'm sure that Ms. Rachel was overseeing, she made sure to attend meetings, open lines of communication, check in regularly. Wow, I did not think this was going to happen. So my colleague Katie Swiki says, "Ms. Rachel reminds us what trust in community wisdom looks like. It means moving a set of meetings to tend to an emergency need. It means picking up the phone regardless of the time of day or week. It means having bold conversations about racial justice in spaces where it may not be welcomed and advocating for community decision-making whenever possible. She has taught us that humility is a core component of strong leadership. She has demonstrated that she will work whatever means available to her to amplify communities' voices. Recognizing solutions must be grounded in the voices of community. Her capacity to stay true to larger vision for racial justice and at the same time navigate the complex path of bureaucratic institutions is so inspiring." And I would say, you know, one of my favorite quotes by Maya Angelou is, really sums up how I feel about Rachel and how I imagine others do too, is that, I've learned that people will forget what you said, and people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. So thank you, Rachel.
Cheryl, you're up next. Rachel, I hope you're hanging in there. Is Cheryl on?
I think so. Am I?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, Chair Kefory.
Good morning.
And Commissioners. Good morning to the rest of the panels that are on here, that I don't know your names, but I've seen you before. My portion of this is sharing my spoken words for Ms. Rachel and just listening to her coworkers, my sentiments exactly. Because when I met her at McFAB, I knew I was meeting someone who the community meant the world to her, and it still does. And I'm grateful and happy that she accepted this to take the state, because we need her. So thank you for that, Ms. Rachel. And I will share my spoken words. And the title is called Fearless Warrior. At first glance, I knew I was meeting greatness. Fearless Warrior crept up again and again. And then I heard her voice booming, as though microphones had been placed around the room. I share a poem title, Soldier From the Streets to the Boardroom. And Ms. Rachel, quote unquote, "my warrior", said, "You are most definitely our soldier." That moment showed me that my ancestors had answered my prayers of sending a fearless warrior on my path, the quote unquote, red road. And as Ms. Rachel shared her knowledge, compassion, powerful activism with McFAB and the world, her kindness, problem-solving, amazing social justice skills, she has lifted up our community and shown us activists just how to advocate for yourself and others that may or may not be able to use their voices. Fearless Warrior striving for equality and equity throughout the state of Oregon. Her teachings has empowered myself and others to always move forward and have the courage to always move forward and have the courage to open minds and shed those lens that has kept separation on the table of Oregon, the US, the world. I'm proud to know Ms. Rachel as Public Health Director for the state of Oregon as I am for being a member of McFAB. And so I truly am in awe of greatness and seeing her next chapter unfold. Thank you, Ms. Cheryl, the poet.
Thank you, Cheryl, for sharing your poetry with us this morning. It was beautiful.
You're welcome.
Next up, we have Jessica Guernsey.
Good morning, Chair Kefory and members and lovely guests. Cheryl, you rock. Thank you for those beautiful spoken words. I knew that you would be powerful and deliver. Well, I'm going to just, I do want to say some words that I did write down last week when I had the honor of being appointed as the LPHA. I said a few words about Rachel, and I mentioned that I'm a crier. So, at some point, I'm going to look at my notes because I will just start sobbing because I've already been sobbing this morning, listening to the beautiful tributes to Ms. Rachel. Couple things. Chair Kefory, I just want to say that I know you saw Rachel walking the floor on the sixth floor, but after everybody else was gone, I just want folks to know that we were eating a lot of garlic bread, strategizing for the next day of work over the last couple of months. So, sorry to blow our secret. We've eaten a lot of garlic bread over the last couple of months. So, I was going to start out these memories with some comic relief. My son Lorenzo was trying to help me learn a couple of dance steps. We were going to do a dance together on screen, and then we watched it and decided it was horribly wrong. So, Rachel Lorenzo saved us all from a really embarrassing moment. But in all seriousness, one of my greatest memories of Rachel actually is about our children, Niana and Lorenzo. And I just have this incredible memory of over 16 years ago, where we had our babies one month apart. And one of the stories I love to tell is Rachel went into labor, and she was at Clackamas Kaiser. And I wanted to go see her, and her husband said, you know, "I want you to wait until this certain time." Now, he was smart enough to know that if I came in at a certain time during labor, that I would probably get really freaked out. So, I thank Nick for making sure I didn't come in at the wrong time because I ended up coming in at this beautiful serene moment where some of the hard labor had passed. And I remember late, I remember Rachel sitting there at Kaiser. She looked splendid and beautiful. There was a beautiful bouquet of flowers sitting next to her, and she just made it look so peaceful and easy. And that really characterizes a bunch of things about my working relationship with Rachel and our parallel paths in life. That moment, I thought to myself, "I'm going to be able to do this too" because I see Rachel being strong and graceful and leaning into this discomfort and being okay. So, for me, that's just a story that I always remember about kind of growing with Rachel. I, you know, in terms of our work together, I don't even know where to start, but I'm going to try. Rachel, I just feel so blessed to have been able to work alongside you for the last 20 years. You've been a mentor to me personally and professionally and spiritually. I've learned so much from you. There are very few people that I've crossed paths with that I think of in this way. I honestly think of you as a spiritual practitioner of public health and civil service. It is more than a job or a career or even a calling. I can't help but feel right now that the whole universe is crying out for the kind of leadership that you demonstrate, change, something different, the healing spirit and joy, just a completely different kind of leadership that this world needs so much right now. I like Ms. Tamika. I am going through phases of grief and loss myself in not being able to work with you every day in the way we've worked in the past, but I'm also feeling so blessed for the whole state of Oregon and the new work we'll do together. I think a lot about some of the words of one of our colleagues, Jillian Joseph from the Native Wellness Institute and the Future Generations Collaborative. They have a saying that shift happens, that's S-H-I-F-T, shift happens, and trust the process. And this is what you ignite in me and other people, that incredible shift, trust, integrity, power with and within, never power over, bringing forward everyone's strengths, building something that's greater than the sum of its parts. The we, many of these qualities are the antidotes to systemic white dominance. Over the years, I've watched you be a, what I call, a stealth disruptive leader, never ego-driven or self-centered, totally devoted to community and being a civil servant. You have been masterful at using the tools of public health, blending community wisdom, data, community partnership, and supporting a policy program agenda that drives change and addresses some of the most egregious wrongs of our state and our country's collective history, all while holding up resilience, community strength, joy, and focusing more on where we're going than where we've been. I feel such gratitude to have been in the space with you, working and learning. Thank you for all you've given and all that you will give. And I just really want, I hope that family is listening. I really want to thank your family. I know you've missed many dinners, events, beach trips, and other things because of how much you give to your work. I thank your family for their generosity and sharing you. I know it's hard. I also know your family is a great support to you, especially to your daughter and husband. I hope they're watching and hearing all of these well-deserved accolades for you. And I know you're stepping into a big role that's going to be super challenging. I just want to remind you that on those days that are particularly difficult, your spirit animal is the ocean. Thank you, Ms. Rachel.
Jessica, before we have Rachel give us some thoughts and memories and parting words, I would like to have the Commissioners jump in here and add their admiration and thoughts on Rachel. And we will start with Commissioner Stegman. Wait, you're unmuted. We heard you.
Oh, can you hear? Oh, okay, sorry. Wow, so many wonderful accolades, Rachel. And I was watching you on the video, and I can tell that you're extremely moved, and it's really heartwarming to see the relationships that you've built and the love that people have for you. And, you know, I think back of being a Commissioner or a Counselor, and it's, we have so many people that come through our doors. And the reality is, is that we've had you for quite a long time, and we've been so fortunate. And that if and when people move on, it's because they're incredibly talented. And I think you definitely fall into that category. And so I'm really excited for your next adventure. I thought it was really interesting for, if there's any community health workers out there, this is how Rachel Banks started. So, it doesn't matter, you know, where you start in life. Rachel's just an incredible example of what you can contribute back to your community. And of course, the REACH program out here in East County has just been so instrumental and so important to the African-American community. And so I'm really grateful for your leadership and the funding that you brought to East County. And I think, Tamika, I liked what you said about keep your head high so your crown doesn't fall off. I think that that is so appropriate. And Rachel, you have kept your head held high, and I know that you will serve us, and we need you at the state. So, I wish you all the best and agree with all the wonderful words that have been said about you. And we will miss you, but we will, we will see you and look forward to partnering with you in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Stegman. Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Thank you, Chair. Rachel, I just, I hope you were feeling so loved and honored and treasured this morning because it's so well-deserved. And there have been so many wonderful and eloquent things that have been said about you today, and so it's really hard to add to that. But I just want to say how grateful I am for your leadership at the county and the way that you have led with your whole self and your, and your values and your focus on community and everything you've done. I think you are an incredible example of how, who we are and where we come from can be the engine for creating change in the world that impacts so many people. And you've done that for years here at the county. You've grown up, and some of those pictures are wonderful to see when you were so younger and then getting older. But it's been wonderful because we've benefited from that here at the county from your leadership, and our entire community has benefited from this. I think that with the crisis that we've seen at COVID, having your steady presence, leading the way, and helping push for the focus on our entire community is one of the reasons why we have such low rates compared to other urban populations across the country because of your leadership, because of your insistence on making sure that we are taken care of and considering all of our people in Multnomah County. And I am so hopeful about the change that you're going to be able to impact at the state level so that we have that same perspective statewide because we need it. And there, and we need to make sure that as we're moving forward on this as a state, that we have that same, that same focus. But, but it's not just about COVID. I mean, that's the most recent thing. But the way that you've been really leading and pushing on the priorities that you see for our community in terms of public health is, has been incredible. It's been inspiring. And, and they're the big things, but also for me, it's the, it's the small things. I remember you sent an email to me after a meeting where we did a land acknowledgement, and you were just grateful for that. And I just think that the way your personal connection and your, and your true, true values of making sure that we are grounded in why we're here and bringing those values every way is one of the things that I will remember the most. So, thank you so much for everything you've done. It's so, it's such a pleasure to honor you today, and I can't wait to keep working with you and see what you do at the state.
Commissioner Japal?
Thank you, Chair. Wow, Rachel, you know, I, I think that the amazingly beautiful words that the people who've worked with you day in and day out, your colleagues, Patricia, Tamika, Xenia, Cheryl, Jessica, those words speak so much more powerfully to your work and to who you are than anything that, that we can offer. I just want to add my thanks. I want to thank you for your decades of service to Multnomah County and for the decades of service that I know are going to come. I want to thank you for your exceptional leadership during the COVID crisis. And as Commissioner Vega Peterson said, that's just been the latest and that's sort of the culmination of your work. Everything else has led up to it. But your leadership has been, has been exceptional and is, I agree, I think, responsible for the relatively low rates that we've seen here in Multnomah County. And I particularly want to appreciate your early recognition of the fact that BIPOC communities were going to be hardest hit and your incredibly comprehensive response to that understanding. I've always appreciated the fact that you present information and strategy so well and so clearly, and you always ground it in values and principles. It's never separate from values and principles, and I think that's what makes, part of what makes your work so powerful. And then I want to, I want to echo something the Chair said about community first. One of my first memories of you is you directing traffic at the St. John's Parade. And I, you know, that's, it's a small example, but I think it is, it reflects what we've heard from everybody, which is commitment to community first, and that is also what makes your work so powerful. So, I am so grateful, and like everyone else, I'm really looking forward to having that, those qualities, that skill, that experience, and leadership at the state level. Thank you, and looking forward to working with you in that capacity.
Thank you, Commissioner Japal. Commissioner Myron?
Thank you. It's, it's hard to even speak after all of those incredible words from so many amazing people who have worked with Rachel and from my fellow Commissioners. I think, you know, I, I so respect those speakers who have come up and spoken initially about Rachel after working with her for years, for decades. And I appreciate what Tamika said, that Rachel is a phenomenal woman. Xenia, I just really appreciated what you said about Rachel saying that she, that people will never forget how you make them feel. Cheryl, your powerful spoken word was, was just so incredibly moving and spoke so to who Rachel is as a human being. And Jessica, I mean, you're just, you're just amazing. And you're right on when you were saying that Rachel is the kind of leader that this world needs right now. Rachel has really been a shining light at the county. You know, when I first came in almost four years ago as a healthcare provider, you think, "Public health is going to be my priority, and I don't know, I don't know what I'm doing here at the county," but, but I know this is what is meaningful to me and that there is a way to make a difference. And from the first time I met Rachel, Rachel, you were just like a kindred spirit. Your commitment to community, your just understanding of the depth of the issues, what a powerful difference public health makes in the lives of people and in communities. And that, that concept, that public health really is everything. And you have just been incredibly thoughtful, always focusing on the health inequities and disparities and, and community as the heart of your work and our work at the county. And I've just enjoyed our conversations on both a policy level, of course, but just on a personal level and who you are as a human being. The only things that make it acceptable for you to be leaving right now are the fact, A, that you're going to the state, so your influence hopefully can manifest more broadly. And also that Jessica is stepping in because she clearly just has, can continue with your vision and brings such depth and, and, you know, her own, her own being to this role. And I'm going to miss you, but I know you're, you're there. I'm not going to stop talking to you. And I also, as Commissioner Vega Peterson said, I just want to express my gratitude to you and wish you the best in this new chapter. Thank you.
And I know I get to speak twice, but that's what I'm going to do anyway because I have to say, Rachel, you have truly saved lives. Your work to tackle obesity, tobacco use among youth and people of color, vaping, infant mortality, racism, and now COVID, we owe you a debt of gratitude. And you know that when you go to the state and you need anything, you just call me. I'm here for you. And now, if there's anything you would like to share with us, we are happy to hear from you.
Wow. Thank you all. I, I have, I have things written down. I'm not going to be able to, to get through it. But I just want to thank you, Multnomah County, for seeing me, for valuing me. for seeing me, for valuing, for listening. There are so many people in our community who are brilliant and amazing, whose voices, you know, are never heard. And I want to acknowledge them and also, you know, an honor to be able to hear from the people who have spoken today, for all of the people that I've worked with, but mostly for seeing and valuing who I am, which I owe to a lot of people. First and foremost, God, who has done amazing things in my life. It's hard to comprehend. That little girl like me from the hood in Portland, so glad to hear you say that, Tamika, because you finally admitted what I've been saying for all these times about the demos and how everyone should have been one. Sorry, Chair, but it's the truth. And I have to thank my mommy, who's listening, who I know is so proud of me. In fact, most of the time, I won't send her stuff because I know she's going to blow it all over Facebook, and she finds out, like through Charlene and other people, that are totally feeding her this information. But thank you, Mom, for raising me, pouring everything into us, for being a public servant for over 30 years, teaching children, for working two or three jobs to keep everything that we have, for devoting everything to us and your parenting, and for all of your community work. And I want to thank my dad for always being grounded, no matter what hard times, for being grateful for the little things, for taking care of our elders. Clearly, to my ancestors, those who I know and those whom I don't know because of the impacts of slavery and separation, to my grandparents, to my aunties. I know my Auntie Pam and Uncle Norman are listening. I want to thank you all for everything and for my Auntie P, who I always said, I want to grow up and be just like her, a government, a public servant who cares about community, who took a massive pay cut after working in the city of Seattle and overseeing major transportation projects and violence prevention and a number of things, to be the CEO and President of the Seattle Urban Movement. We thought she was going to retire, but the world needs her, so she's going to get back on the grind. There are in all of very that you have continued the work of the community, that you're continuing to listen to the community, that you have taken little investments and made them into big investments. I want to thank my public health team, which we call FET, Public Health Enterprise Team. These are folks that are working every day on every aspect of public health, which is everything. And, you know, especially the COVID folks who've been there day in and day out, people have gotten to see me and acknowledge the work that I've done. And there are so many people in our emergency operations center that were there just as laid up there on the eighth floor, working from dark to dark. I want to thank you, Jessica, for stepping into the role, for believing in me when I didn't know what you saw and what you were talking about in terms of leadership, for being that co-conspirator in equity efforts. The Chair Kofori, you and your team have been amazing. It's been a blessing to get to work with elected officials in this capacity. I have worked with folks in the St. John's Parade. I appreciate that memory, Commissioner. Jayapal, that was, my grandmother was the St. John's Parade Chair for 25 years. Before she passed, she wouldn't let anyone do that job. She didn't trust anyone else to do it. So I do that for her. But you and your staff, Chair, have been phenomenal. I don't think regular people could ever understand how hard you were, how with so many issues. I've been amazed just in working with Board of Health staff and a variety of different policies, but in COVID, and you all have so many other issues to work on in so many different ways. You have an amazing staff. You have a staff, a longtime staff, which I think is a testament to your leadership and being able to have people come day in and day out, especially a really hard job working with you for decades. I've always admired that. I have to say, Kim Milton, I know you're watching, you're probably behind office in some form or fashion, and I can't thank you enough. I admire you so much. You're the smartest person I've ever met. Kim was our public health policy liaison. People always say they don't know what public health is about. She got like that, I couldn't believe how fast she was picking up things that took me, you know, 15, 20 years, and the way that Kim can bring it all together with that head and soul and to all of your staff, Chair. People have been phenomenal, all that crew that moved from Multnomah Building to the McCoy Building for those late nights, walking the floor, eating candy, lots of candy, and garlic bread, only getting a few steps to walk off the garlic bread and candy. And all of the, you know, other folks who came with us there. And to you all, the board, thank you so much for taking your role as Board of Health so seriously. That was always a dream and a vision of mine, that we would be working with elected officials who embraced and stepped boldly and courageously into this role as Board of Health in a way that only you all can do, that nobody else in this county, no other decision maker has that role besides you all as the Board of Health. And I am so thankful that you all have done that excitedly. And to my community and folks who poured into me, so many people, both at work and employees of color and managers of color, and in the community through church and through schooling, even though I went, I grew up in a system that was, experienced systemic racism that was defunded and underfunded and underutilized, and we knew that, we knew it wasn't fair, but we knew that people believed in us, and we knew that we were going to grow up and give back to that community, for our enough. So I couldn't have had a better experience. And to everybody who's had any part and who I've gotten to work with in any way, thank you. And I'm going to miss, okay, this is the last thing. I am so going to miss working at Multnomah County. I've had a chance to work, like I said, with amazing people, to come in as a community health worker, to leave as your public health director. And I've gotten to do that every step of the way, working with people that I love to work with and serving my community, from culturally specific efforts to health equity. And that's, it's been a great honor. Thank you.
I feel like we should have some fanfare. It seems kind of anticlimactic to just move on to R3. So maybe we'll just do a We love you, Rachel.
Love you, Rachel!
All right, Marina.
R3, Proclaiming October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Multnomah County, Oregon.
So moved?
Second.
Commissioner Vega Peterson moves. Commissioner Jayapal seconds. Approval of R3. Commissioner Jayapal, are you kicking this off?
Yes, I would love to. Thank you, Chair. I want to start by just thanking all the panelists for being with us today. This is an important proclamation every year, and it feels particularly important this year. So it goes without saying, and yet we find ourselves saying it over and over again, that this has been an incredibly difficult year. It has been a particularly difficult year for people experiencing domestic violence and for those who work with and support them. Confinement at home with their abusers, isolation, being cut off from their usual support systems, economic, personal, and social stressors, all these things have exacerbated the incidence and the severity of domestic violence in our community and across the country. It has also been a year in which our attention has been focused in new and profound ways on public health, public safety, and racial justice. Domestic violence sits at the intersection of these issues. It has direct impact on the health of survivors, their families, and their communities. It harms safety and calls on the resources of our public safety systems. And while all parts of our community can and do experience domestic or intimate partner violence, the impacts of racism, homophobia, ableism, other forms of oppression lead to marginalized communities suffering disproportionately. As just one example, Black women experience intimate partner violence at a rate of 35% higher than that of white women, and at the same time are less likely to use social services or other supports, all of which highlights the necessity of culturally specific services and responses to domestic violence. For a very long time, domestic violence was thought of as a private family matter, something to be resolved behind closed doors rather than through public intervention. While we've come a long way from those times, there's still a tendency to think of it as an issue subsidiary to larger issues of community violence. We must continue to evolve our thinking and to recognize domestic violence as community violence. Domestic violence is one of the leading causes of homelessness. In Multnomah County's 2019 Point in Time Count, almost 40% of those experiencing homelessness said that they had experienced domestic violence, and almost 30% said that they were currently fleeing domestic violence. And that relationship is growing. The proportion of people experiencing homelessness who've also experienced domestic violence has grown by 10% since 2017, a rate 10x the growth of homelessness in general. Domestic violence is a driver of poverty, with economic abuse often a form of violence and control, and job loss, credit deterioration, and other forms of economic instability often a result. These are impacts that are disproportionately felt by people who identify as women and those who identify as transgender, effectively taking huge swaths of our community out of the workforce and out of our economic systems. And domestic violence deeply impacts our collective future through its impacts on our children. Children who see and experience violence experience trauma that can affect all aspects of their lives for a very long time. The twin crises we're facing of public health and of racism have called on us to imagine new ways of responding to our most pressing community problems. We have the opportunity now and in the months and years to come to imagine new ways preventing and responding to domestic violence. And we have the opportunity to do that, imagining, by centering the voices and experience of those most impacted. I want to close by expressing my profound gratitude to all those who have worked so hard, particularly over the past year, to continue to provide essential services to survivors of domestic violence, our amazing Multnomah County staff, our nonprofit partners, and our partners in law enforcement. You've had to adapt in so many ways, and you've had to do it in an ever-changing environment at a time when survivors are facing such complicated and dangerous situations. Thank you so much for all you do. And with that, I'll turn it over to Alex Sanchez.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Alex Sanchez. I use they/them pronouns, and I lead the Domestic and Sexual Violence Coordination Office here in Multnomah County. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you virtually today. And I am also very excited to have the panel with me. I just want to set a little context for you all and then want to turn it over so that you all can hear from the voices of folks who've been doing this work on the ground. Marina, can I have the next slide? As we know, domestic violence is multifaceted. It's a pattern of behavior. It's not a single incident, and it is certainly not only physical abuse, emotional abuse, sexual abuse, financial abuse, and also the aspects of isolation, coercion, fear, and blame all come together to create domestic violence. It's power and control that is at the root of domestic violence, and I think it's important to continue to recognize that as we think both about the individual impacts of DV, but also the ways that our systems uphold those pieces of isolation and coercion to make people more vulnerable to the individual experience of domestic violence. We also know that DV is often very intersectional with other forms of violence, including sex trafficking, sexual assault, and gang violence, and disproportionately affects people who are already sitting at the intersections of multiple forms of marginalization. We also know that one of the most dangerous times for a survivor is when services are being sought out or when they decide to leave a relationship, which means that the folks doing domestic violence advocacy in our community are really holding the line for people in their most vulnerable time. And so it's so amazingly important to me that we have such an incredible continuum of service providers, from our systems-based providers in law enforcement and criminal justice, to our community-based providers in our nonprofits, and especially our culturally specific providers that are working side by side within their communities to create ways of addressing domestic violence that are culturally responsive and relevant to the people they serve. Could I have the next slide, please? In the DSVCO, we fund program areas across a wide variety of prevention to intervention resources, including domestic violence advocacy in both standalone and embedded culturally specific programs, and our crisis response efforts through the Gateway Center and the Domestic Violence Crisis Response Unit, which is embedded within PBB. We fund sexual assault advocacy, legal services, services for sex trafficked youth. We also focus on training, policy, and systems coordination. And all of that together means that we have some pretty incredible outcomes over the past year. We've served over 1,200 individuals in 600 households, and 82% of the participants that we've served in our funded programs identify as BIPOC, which again continues to be so important as we really focus our efforts on folks who experience the most marginalization. Next slide. Domestic violence during COVID-19 has been, it's never been boring to work in this office during COVID-19. We know that domestic violence has increased in both frequency and severity during the pandemic, largely because DV thrives on isolation. And one of the consequences of COVID-19 has been increasing isolation for folks across the spectrum. So when it became clear that the pandemic was going to cause this increase in frequency and increase in severity, our continuum really came together in a huge way. Our response has been in focusing on new ways to connect with services. I want to highlight the work that the Gateway Center and our Domestic Violence Crisis Response have done in keeping critical services available to folks. They pivoted so quickly to bringing in new ways to connect virtually with folks and making sure the doors stayed open to the Gateway Center and our Domestic Violence Crisis Response Advocates were able to stay on the ground, working with law enforcement from the very beginning of the pandemic. So I just want to give a special shout out to those folks on my team. We also increased our collaboration across the spectrum of domestic violence service providers. Our community-based service providers especially really came together and were in constant communication with one another, sharing resources, learning together, reaching out just to ensure that everyone was up to date, had what they needed to provide resource, and could really think through some of the problems that came up early on as we were trying to navigate a whole new world of advocacy. We also increased our funding, specifically through CARESAC dollars and County General Fund dollars that supported alternatives to shelter, as our 140 shelter beds have been pretty much consistently full since the beginning of the pandemic. We realized we needed new resources to provide folks with safe spaces, whether they were fleeing domestic violence or had lost their housing due to a combination of COVID-19 and DV. So we received an investment from the board of $300,000 in one-time-only funding to increase our ability to give motel vouchers. And with that, we've served well over 300 households with an average stay of a week to 10 days, which has been a huge which has been a huge, huge piece of resource for the folks in our community-based continuum. We also received one point four million dollars in rent assistance through the CARES Act and real client assistance to help meet folks' basic needs, again, at some of the most vulnerable times in people's lives. And we have heard consistently from survivors that the ability to access those resources has made a huge difference for them. I'll take the next slide, if you will. I want to be able to turn it over to our panelists, but I would be very remiss if I didn't thank my staff for their incredible work. And I'd like to name every single one of them, but we don't have time. So I just, I want to shout out the folks who report directly to me. Lee Watts, Shannon Rose, Abby Gesama, Allison Wilson and her whole team at the Domestic Violence Crisis Response Unit, and Martha Strawn Morris and the whole team at the Gateway Center. All of you are the reason that I do this work. And our staff and our community partnerships are some of the most incredible that I have ever seen. I, I really enjoy sitting at a table where everyone is coming together with the same goal of living a world that's free from violence. And every piece of work that we take on in this continuum has that value at its core. And I, I think it keeps us all strong in this work despite all of the challenges that we face. And so I want for the board to really hear from the folks doing the work on the ground. So I'd like to turn it over to our panelists. We have Emma Kane from the Multnomah County District Attorney's Office. We have Jenny Woodson from BOA Oregon Home Free. And we have Freya, who's joining us from the Joint Office of Homeless Services. So I'll turn it over to Emma Kane.
Good morning. My name is Emma Kane. Thank you so much, Alex. And thank you, Commissioner, Japal, as well. I'm the lead advocate for the Domestic Violence Unit of the Multnomah County District Attorney's Office. I'm honored to have the opportunity to share with you how our advocacy team has been working to serve survivors of domestic violence through this especially challenging time. Our entire community has been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Since the last Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamation, we've served over three thousand victims. Domestic violence presents in many forms. To name a few examples, the advocates within our office work with children who have witnessed and experienced domestic violence with victims of juvenile offenders, which includes parents harmed by their children and intimate partner violence at its earliest stages with teen dating violence. We strive to meet the needs of older adults and people with disabilities, understanding how DV can play out in their lives with caregivers and family members. We work with young children harmed by their parents and other family members. We have witnessed the impacts when DV overlaps with gang violence, sexual assault, and sex trafficking. Victims in all of these areas have increased barriers to meeting their needs. I've listened to survivors express how COVID-19 quarantine and social distancing measures amidst that it is more difficult to access resources like shelter spaces to stay with a friend or family member, given the health risk, or to find safe, long-term housing to move into. We are especially thankful for these partnerships because they've enabled us to address survivor safety concerns in a collaborative way. For the first time in our county, a completely remote filing of protective orders has been possible through our collaboration with the Gateway Center, Volunteers of America, and the courts. Our advocacy is not limited to just the court process, but intersects with all types of services, mental health, housing, and much more. As an example, our advocacy extended into the doctor's office to assist a victim with COVID-19 who is unable to get follow-up treatment and medical care for their injuries for head trauma and strangulation, both of which have long-lasting and even deadly consequences. As advocates and attorneys within the DA's office, we have continued to prioritize meeting with survivors in person, equipped with personal protective equipment and while observing social distancing to provide essential services and be responsive to their needs. This includes accompanying them to grand juries, release hearings, court hearings, and even trials. Human connection, support, and having someone literally by your side or to greet you with open arms is vital. We've had to find ways to adapt to bring that warmth and support through our words, gestures, and simply our presence. Throughout COVID-19, we've seen an incredible loss of life as a nation and as a community. Members of our community continue to lose their lives to domestic violence homicides, a loss so deeply tragic. Our advocates work closely with surviving family members who are trying to grapple with not only the devastating loss of their loved one in such an unthinkable way, but during these times, they also have to weigh when and how they can come together as a family and community to grieve. Our advocates work closely and offer support, resources, and compassion during such devastating times. Isolation is one of the strongest tools to manipulate another person, which makes the efforts to connect and care all that more important during these times. To our partners, thank you for allowing us to call in favors, for working a little bit harder, a little bit longer, and for the times that it was more than a little bit. How far we've come is contrasted by how far we have to go. The road ahead is long, but as is true of so many things, having someone on your side and sharing their load is what keeps us all going. Thank you to all domestic violence advocates for the ways that you have adapted your services, your approach, and for the doors left open. Thank you very much.
So I'll turn it over to Jenny Woodson from BOA Oregon Home Free.
Thank you. As Alex said, I'm Jenny Woodson. I'm the Program Director at Volunteers of America Oregon Home Free. Thanks for allowing me some time to speak today. When someone asks us what it's like to be a domestic violence advocate, my short answer is usually that we just meet survivors where they're at. Over the years, domestic violence services have had to figure out how to reach survivors of hidden violence that by its nature is shrouded in shame, isolation, and fear. This is how advocates have come to be in police stations, courthouses, DHS offices, schools, healthcare clinics, and many other locations, literally meeting survivors where they're at. We meet survivors with one agenda item: safety. That's it. It's not my decision or place to give advice about what someone should do. Since March of this year, meeting survivors where they're at has taken on a very different meaning for advocates. As our lives have changed with the global pandemic and a steadfast push against racism and police brutality, domestic violence advocates have had to figure out how to reach survivors. As with any crisis, Black, Indigenous, and people of color are disproportionately affected, particularly survivors. Domestic violence thrives, as everyone has talked about already, in fear and isolation. Survivors that once had unmonitored hours while they or their partners were at work, kids were in school, now have no alone time. With significant access points for services closing, advocates are trying to safety plan with fewer options at their disposal. As daily life has moved online, we scramble to get smartphones and data plans to survivors. When survivors call the police because they're being assaulted, only to be told that they would have to wait multiple hours or even worse that their abuse wasn't an emergency right now, advocates talk through ways to help survivors create physical safety in their homes. When restraining orders went from being served in one day to being served in sometimes over a week, we partnered with a private process server to get same or next-day service. When survivors, like many in our community, couldn't pay rent, we accepted a massive influx of CARES funds to be spent in six months, which is no small feat. And when the Gateway Center closed to walk-ins and advocates couldn't go to the courthouse to help with restraining order paperwork, Home Free built upon technology and processes used by the Gateway Center in the last ten years and began offering a restraining order hotline. Survivors could apply for protective orders and be heard by a judge remotely, continuing a service that at Home Free we've provided for nearly twenty years. We didn't miss a day. If you take anything away from today, I hope you hear these stories of resilience of survivors and advocates. These are Home Free stories, but all providers in Multnomah County are creatively meeting the needs of our community. In this past year, we've strengthened partnerships and formed new ones. We embrace technology that will create greater access for survivors once this pandemic is over. As our community faces challenges, the domestic violence services providers across the county will continue to meet survivors where they're at and walk side by side as we create the community we want, a safe community. Thank you for your time. I declare an October Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Multnomah County.
Thank you, Jenny. I'll turn it over to Freya, and could I get the next slide, Rita?
Can you hear me? Okay, thank you, Alex. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. It is an honor, and I am humbled that you are listening. The list displayed that you are looking at now is not just a comprehensive list of services that are available to DV survivors in Multnomah County. These are services that I have personally accessed each and every one of these agencies, systems, or processes. I know we often use statistics to talk about domestic violence, but I wanted you to see a living, flesh-and-blood person who has accessed all of these. I can assure you that I'm no unicorn, and there are many more just like me who have touched all of these systems. It's pervasive. As I was thinking about the value and the specialness of DV services, I kept trying to distill down to the one magic ingredient, and I kept coming back to DV advocates. Emily Hyde, Haley Purcell, Allison Wilson, Anna Gonzalez, Jenny Woodson, I was thinking of all of you as I wrote this. As I try to walk you through some of the reasons they are so magical, I want to share one of my favorite quotes from Rumi. "The wound is where the light enters you." Because of the kindness and knowledge of advocates in all of these systems I listed, the light was able to penetrate my trauma, and I was able to persist. Advocates showed me unconditional kindness until I was able to show myself kindness. They gave me knowledge without expectation. They gave me assurance that my voice was a gift to be nurtured and not dismissed as shrill. They taught me how to leverage my privilege for good, to help others, sorry. They showed up every day with passion and boundless enthusiasm. They grieved my losses with me when others asked me to be grateful. They bathed me in light and understanding when I only felt worthy of shrouding myself in darkness to replicate the invisibility that I felt. They gave me words to give voice to my story and later agency to own that story unapologetically. They did not look away when my story was unpalatable, scary, or inconvenient. They rose up and looked my rage in the eye without judgment. They gave me fortitude and told me I was resilient, that I mattered. They gave my shame spiral a name and did not recoil when she insisted on showing up to the party. They nurtured me and mentored me with such grace and intention that I was able to go on to mentor others and become a DV advocate. I know it's not typically an aspiration to be one, but it was for me for a long time, and then I became one. When someone is shown that kind of grace, it is restorative, and in my case, it was transformative. I am actually pinching myself a little bit to be sitting on a panel with Jenny Woodson. This tribute feels a little paltry after listening to everybody talk about Rachel, but Jenny was one of my first DV advocates. We met in room two-eleven at the old courthouse over a decade ago. She helped me get one of my first pro bono lawyers from a fancy law firm downtown to keep my restraining order in place, my very first restraining order. Because of my exposure to such skilled, knowledgeable, and compassionate advocates, I was able to harness my rage instead of letting it consume me. I ended a nearly ten-year run of providing direct services as a DV advocate in Multnomah County last December when I was fortunate enough to accept a job with Multnomah County at the Joint Office of Homeless Services with my first love, Housing for Everyone. Thank you so much for the proclamation and your commitment to our community of survivors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Freya. That ends our panel, and I just want to thank Freya so much for being willing to speak to her experience both as a survivor and as a survivor that now works so hard in our system to ensure that other survivors have the resources that they need and have the connections to do all of the things that Freya has been able to do over the course of her experience. So I just, my really deep and heartfelt thank you to her. And that's it for our panel, so I want to turn it back over to the board and see if there's anything that you'd like to add before we read the proclamation.
Alex, why don't you read the proclamation first, and then we'll go through and have comments. Commissioners, thanks.
Thank you.
Proclaiming October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Multnomah County. The Multnomah County Board of Commissioners finds domestic violence is a complex and pervasive problem in our community that affects individuals across economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal lines. Domestic violence is not just physical. It can include emotional, mental, and financial abuse. One in four women and one in seven men aged eighteen and older in the United States have been the victim of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. One in fifteen children are exposed to domestic violence every year, and between thirty and sixty percent of perpetrators of intimate partner violence also abuse children in the home. Exposure to domestic violence harms children and places them at risk of experiencing further violence. Domestic violence is a leading cause of homelessness among families in the United States and is a significant contributing factor to unemployment and poverty. Nearly eight million days of paid work each year is lost to domestic violence issues, the equivalent of more than thirty-two thousand full-time jobs. Although domestic violence can affect anyone, the impact is not uniform. Survivors from marginalized groups, including individuals with disabilities, members of the LGBTQ community, immigrants, older adults, and women of color experience disproportionate rates of domestic violence. These disproportionate impacts are often a direct result of systemic barriers, inequities, and inherent racism, sexism, homophobia, ableism, ageism, and other oppressions in our systems. Challenges that disproportionately affect communities of color in general, poverty, lack of access to educational opportunities, limited job resources, language barriers, fear of deportation, inadequate culturally-responsive and linguistically competent services, are especially limiting and harmful for people of color experiencing violence. Efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence must be informed by an equity lens and be responsive to the disparities experienced by survivors in Multnomah County. The COVID-19 pandemic has created new challenges in our system's response to domestic violence. An overall increase in frequency and severity of domestic violence in the wake of the pandemic have pushed our system to increase collaboration and come up with innovative solutions to help survivors maintain access to critical services. Multnomah County is a leader in addressing domestic violence through its prevention, public safety, and health and human services programs. Our cross-sector collaboration stretches across housing, criminal justice, law enforcement, community-based services, and more, ensuring that survivors receive holistic services that address their unique needs. Multnomah County is committed to ensuring the safety, dignity, and self-determination of those who have been harmed by domestic violence, safeguarding the well-being of children who have been impacted by domestic and sexual violence, and providing appropriate intervention and accountability with domestic violence offenders. The Multi- County Board of Commissioners proclaims October 2020 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Multnomah County, and we urge all Multnomah County residents to actively work toward the elimination of domestic violence by supporting and believing survivors and promoting healthy and respectful relationships.
Thank you, Alex. And now is the time for Commissioners to make comments or ask questions if they have any. We will start with Commissioner Myron.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, first of all, to Commissioner Japal. Thank you for elevating this issue of domestic violence and for your dedication to this work. Alex, there's so much to thank you for, but for your presentation here and sharing the incredible work that you and your team have been doing and highlighting it. I really appreciate so much sort of the educational component of your presentation because there are so many things that are because there are so many things that are so profound and so important and so informative and so shocking about what the reality is out there for survivors of domestic violence and highlighting that it could not be more important. And I continue to be shocked. I feel like I've heard this and each time it is more and more shocking and heartbreaking. And also appreciate pointing out exactly what is happening during COVID. It absolutely makes so much sense given what some of the risk factors are in terms of domestic violence, but when you put together extreme stress and extreme isolation, it is just a crucible for this mix that can lead to increased violence. And so just deeply appreciate the work you're doing and you're telling us about it. And then Emma and Jenny and Alex telling us about the incredible work of our community and the county in combating the violence that we are seeing. It really is inspiring to see and Freya, you really, you bring it all together. The experience that you have had and your courage in talking about it and the resilience you have demonstrated and now the work that you are doing to pay it forward is so incredible and impactful. And I just appreciate your being here today and your sharing with us and your working for the Joint Office. We are so fortunate to have you. I don't know what else to say except for thank you and I am so thrilled to support this proclamation.
Commissioner Jaya Paul.
I just quickly want to again thank, thank everybody. I want to thank our staff. Alex, I really want to recognize your leadership. It is graceful, it is wise, it is committed, and I have so appreciated working with you. And I want to thank our panelists for the work that you do, for being here, you know, all of you, Emma, Jenny, and Freya, to particularly, as Commissioner Myron said, thank you for sharing our story, for your courage, for that beautiful quote that you offered us from Rumi, "The wound is where the light enters you." And I want to say that the light that you bring to the work that you do will help us get to that goal that Alex mentioned at the beginning, which is a world without violence. So, thank you.
Commissioner Vega Peterson.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank Commissioner Jaya Paul as well for bringing this proclamation forward and for all of the work that you do on this, on the sex trafficking, on this important work that we do at the county and that has such a huge impact on people's lives. I think this presentation today was really powerful, it always is, but I appreciate Alex and Emma and Freya and Jenny, thank you for sharing your stories. Jenny, I don't think it's, I think it's an amazing goal to want to have been a domestic violence advocate. I think that's great because your experience, that's where the power is in the way that you're able to pay it forward to others and to come through and to be able to do that and play that role is amazing. I think the entire team that we have at Multnomah County that is involved in this work is fantastic. I love the partnership with the DA's office on this as well and really trying to create a system that's one about healing, one about safety, and one about moving forward stronger. You know, I think we all, and this has been said, you know, just the impacts that COVID has had on this issue, it was something that I remember in the earliest days of the COVID, this was something that we talked about as being an expectation that we would see an increase in domestic violence because of people having to stay at home because of the stress of losing jobs, of the uncertainty and fear around a disease. And the way that you all have stepped up and stepped into this work and prioritized it and making sure that we are able to reach out to folks, the way that we are able to allocate additional funding and change the way is so important. And I know it's been hard. I know the fact that we haven't been able to use all of the tools that we've had in the past, the past, the locations that have been available has been challenging and I just want to say how much I appreciate the way that everybody's stepped up to find solutions during this time. And, you know, and I think that, you know, we have this, we have this proclamation and we do it every year. I remember to wear my purples. But I wanted to, but this is something that, you know, impacts communities every single day and that's the, you know, the dedication that we have here at the county for and I know as a community we have for it. And so I just want to appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Stigman.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, everything that's already been said, I feel the same way. And thank you, Commissioner Jaya Paul, for bringing this proclamation forward. Some of the things that I really resonated with me, Emma, when you talked about the human connection, is that these are just incredibly challenging and so impactful on people's lives is that, you know, just really, just having somebody stand by you and say that we're on your side, that really is what keeps us all going. So I really appreciate that. Freya, thank you so much. You know, you talked about the work that you're doing, about being resilient and about folks seeing you and telling you that you matter. And I'm so proud of all of the partners in Multnomah County because that's what they're trying to tell you all clearly by the investments that we've made. And, you know, the other thing that you had mentioned, Freya, was I really liked that phrase of transformative grace is that through these kinds of investments is how we address the issues at hand. And I'm just so grateful that you all brought this forward and shared your personal stories. And thank you so much for being vulnerable and sharing with us how important this issue is. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I want to start off by thanking Commissioner Jaya Paul as well for bringing forward this proclamation. And thanks to Alex, Emma, Jenny, and Freya for sharing your work and your personal lives and your stories with us today. Alex, I too appreciated the overview that you gave us upfront. I'm really impressed and heartened by how quickly your team adapted to the new world that we're facing. It's hard for government to move quickly and especially around such a sensitive area where people's lives are at stake. And I just, I have a depth of gratitude. I'm really appreciative of all the work that you've done to date to really bring our domestic violence and sexual assault continuum forward, to move it forward, to move this work, to, you know, put it front and center in our minds and also in the work, you know, to grow upon the work that has been done. I was thinking today, a lot during this presentation, of Chiquita Rollins, who was a mentor of mine, who, I don't know if she was the first domestic violence coordinator at Multnomah County, but she was with us for a long time and really fought a lot of battles on her own to get this issue to the level of importance that it deserves and that it needs to be. And how much you have taken, you know, the foundational work that she did and really moved things forward and brought to light the many intersections with other isms that you outlined so well in the proclamation and especially with our focus on communities of color, which we know are disproportionately affected. So I just commend each of you today, each of the panelists, for rising to this tremendous challenge and to working to ensure that our services continue to reach everyone who needs them despite all of the obstacles. And I just want to honor each and every one of you for continuing to show up, to work long hours on weekends, and to make sure that the services that people need are available. Thank you very much. Marina, would you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Myron?
Aye.
Commissioner Jaya Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Vega Peterson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stigman?
Aye.
Chair Cifori?
Aye. The proclamation is adopted. Thank you. Thanks everyone for coming today.
Thank you all so much for having us.
And that is the end of our regular agenda. Now is the time for board comments on non-agenda items. And I'm going to call on commissioners to see if anyone has anything to share today or to discuss, and we will start with Commissioner Stigman. Just one word, vote. Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Vega Peterson.
So I do have something that I wanted to discuss with the board today. And so yesterday afternoon, I had a meeting with Commissioner Pam Treese, who had attended the AOC membership meeting, I think on Monday or Tuesday of this week, where they were discussing the proposed dues increase for AOC that would go into effect for 2022. But she wanted to meet to discuss it, to get visibility on it, because the voting on the due structure is actually going to be happening at the Budget and Finance Committee meetings and the membership meetings for the bylaws in November and December with the Board of Directors then voting on it in December. So there are two things that have been considered in terms of the due structure for that. And I think all of us are familiar with the kind of structural fact that the dues increases haven't happened on a regular basis and so therefore as a normal operating expenditure is those outpaced with the dues cover. So they're looking at some, you know, a new system in place to get to the dues to level to actually both pay for the existing expenses for AOC and then also have something, an increase so that it would grow with, as the expenses grow. There are two things that are being proposed that Commissioner Treese shared. One is a dues option by population in brackets, so based on kind of a bracket that would, and then the other one was a dues option just on a per-person basis, so population per person. And both of these, both of these proposals would require an increase in Multnomah County dues. The first one would be about $16,000 a year, the next one would be about $27,000 a year increase. I'm going to send the documents that she shared with me out to everybody after this meeting, right after this meeting, but I wanted to put it, to talk about it publicly so that we could have some conversations about what this looks like, what this means, if we want to respond. I know that there was interest in having that conversation, you know, with Clackamas and obviously Washington Counties as well. So I wanted to, I'll share that information with you and happy to follow up or put you in contact with Commissioner Treese. But again, I think because this is something that's going to be coming up at some of the AOC meetings over the next couple of months with expectations that people are voting on it, it's something that's timely for us to be discussing now.
I have a question, Commissioner. Is this dues increase coupled with any other structural changes to, or changes to the bylaws, changes to practices? I know just off the top of my head, I'm remembering conversations about having like a minority report or something so that when and if AOC membership passes a support or oppose a piece of legislation and, for example, if Multnomah County feels the opposite way that we could actually weigh in there, is there, so are there other issues that are tied to this dues increase or is it standing on its own?
So that minority report was something that was discussed actually at this last month's board meeting. And that was something that, or and I believe it was actually the Legislative Committee meeting, but it was something that was discussed in terms of how it would function and what that would look like. And it was more, so there's already something in the bylaws for a minority report, but this was also for policy positions where AOC chooses not to take an official position to have an additional document created that shows where different counties landed in terms of like for or against something, even if AOC wasn't taking an official position. They're working on exactly what that looks like. There were some suggestions that were made in the meeting this past month. And so I think Rob Ovat was going to be taking those and coming together with kind of a final proposal, which I'm happy to share with everyone. But the minority report is something that's always in there. I just don't think that it's been used very frequently, you know, in terms of official documentation. The bylaws that are proposed as part of the due structure is really just approving the bylaw change regarding the dues calculation as stated in the bylaws. So those aren't separate policy ones. However, I think that is the opportunity that we have before us is that are there other things that we, as these dues increases, and some counties, depending on which proposal it is, some counties have increases, a very few, but some do actually have decreases. But what we may want to propose either as a county or as a district aid with the three counties as a response or as a request because of these dues changes. So I think that's what I'm very interested in hearing from everybody from is what that could look like and what you're interested in seeing happen.
Do any of the other three of you commissioners, you just can raise your hand if you have a question for, yeah.
Yeah, I guess it's maybe not so much a question as a comment to pick up on both of your comments, which is there's a clear disconnect between a structure that assesses dues based on population and a structure that doesn't take population into account in terms of the way that we reach agreement and the way that we vote on legislation or other matters. So, you know, I don't know the history of what those conversations have been, but that has always seemed like a disconnect to me and it does seem as if this is a chance to raise that and see if there's some ways to connect those two.
That, exactly what I was thinking. I completely agree with that and think we should use this as an opportunity to raise that issue.
Commissioner Stigman, did you have a comment or question for Commissioner Vega Peterson?
No. Commissioner Vega Peterson, maybe when you get that documentation, I think that there was something in the bylaws that talked kind of about that very issue about if there was something that Multnomah County was not in alignment with, that maybe AOC was or vice versa, that there were kind of policy stands that AOC would maybe choose to stand down. So I think having that clarification would also be helpful in the conversation.
And I guess to follow up on Commissioner Jaya Paul's point, kind of obvious question here is can they raise our dues without our consent? If the majority of members of AOC vote to raise the dues on the three largest counties, can the three largest counties all vote now and still have our dues raised?
So that's a great question and I think that was something that was, well, I think that the way that the board is set up, right, the board would have to approve this change. And so I think technically, you know, technically probably if it's just a majority vote, they could, right? Because I think even if all three counties had all of the members who are on the board show up, I don't think that's not a majority in that room. However, the impact, I think, is if they pass something that is egregiously, you know, different than what we're looking for or, you know, the fact is you don't, they can't also force us to pay the dues. And I think that was a concern that was expressed by the Executive Director, that putting a proposal forward that would cause people to be so unhappy with it that they don't pay the dues would have a significant impact on the AOC budget. I mean, and I was doing the calculation yesterday in the meeting with Commissioner Treese, where just looking at the proposed dues for the tri-county areas, it's about $450,000, you know, per year just for the three counties. So that's a significant impact. So, and that's with the dues option by population bracket total. So I've emailed each of you the documentation so you can look at it. It was timely because Commissioner Treese- It was timely because Commissioner Treese had gone to this meeting and wanted to bring it to our attention as soon as possible. And I know that Commissioner Schrader wasn't able to make that meeting yesterday either, but is interested in having conversations about this. So I think it's timely and I think it's, you know, we need to, I think it's for us to communicate to AOC, like exactly how we're feeling about this and what we need to see happen. And because there, you know, potentially, if something goes forward that, you know, that we can't live with, and that has an impact for AOC.
Can I just have one last question, which is, I can't remember if it was last year or the year before, when they assessed us a separate fee to help pay back the money that was erroneously spent. Will we still have that additional fee as well, or is that wrapped into the new payment structure?
No, that's completely separate. They looked at this, which I think, so I think most counties have paid that off or at least partially paid, you know, what the allocation was for that. So I don't know exactly where Multnomah County is on that, but that's something that was separate. That's kind of, that was backward-facing because of the decisions that had been made by passports and the budgeting. This is really, you know, again, looking forward, starting, it would be starting in January 2022 or whenever the dues are started to be collected for 2022.
I would just, I think this is a really good conversation that we're having, and these are important questions. For me, I feel very strongly that we should have, as Commissioner Jai Paul mentioned, that if we are, our dues are tied to our county's population, that our representation should be tied to our county's population as well. And I feel that that's not, that should be a question and addressed, but I feel more strongly than it being just a question. I would consider what Multnomah County's stance should be if they say, well, no, that doesn't, you know, we don't believe in this for X, Y, Z reasons. Will there be an opportunity to have more of that conversation? Because I think we should seriously consider that.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that the way that the dues are structured compared to how the, both how like staff time is allocated, you know, across county effort and then also like in terms of the policy positions and how the legislation functioning works in terms of policies to get behind and front, there's a disconnect there right now. And I think that disconnect becomes even more egregious when it's, when the due structure is changed. One of the things I will tell you that was part of the past due structure that's not being considered either, the proposals, was that there was actually a curve on the highest amount that dues could be levied against a county. So because there was like a multiplier, like the highest amount that was levied for dues couldn't be more than, and I don't know what the multiplier was, but let's say like 30 times what the lowest one was. That's no longer part of either of the proposals that are going forward, and that was a curve on the higher end. So I think the difference between what the counties are paying is actually increasing because in both of these proposals. You'll see that the population bracket, again, it like, it is less of an increase for larger counties than the per person, but it's still a significant increase.
Thank you, Commissioner Vega Peterson, for bringing this to our attention. And then we have Commissioner Jai Paul. Did you have something to give it your?
Yes, just one announcement, that I'm going to be having a virtual constituent conversation tomorrow over Zoom at 2:00 PM, from 2:00 to 3:00 tomorrow, Friday the 23rd. And you can find the link on my Facebook page. And there was one other place, but I'm sure if you search for it, it'll be out there somewhere. And look forward to seeing you. Thanks.
Good luck tomorrow. And Commissioner Myron?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Commissioner Stigman had the important message of vote, and I'll bookend that with the important message of get your flu shot. I got mine today. It was so quick and easy. It was at Kaiser, had a walk-in outdoors and in and out in, I don't know, less than five minutes. And I don't know if the needles are smaller this year, or I had a skilled technician, but it didn't even hurt. So get your flu shot, everyone. And with that seen, we have, we are adjourned.